Let's take our seats, please. Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have our invocation by Pastor Robert Hodo from New Morning Light Baptist Church. And Conley will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Give an honor to the Most High and give an honor to the Commissioners. I thank you for this opportunity and I do not take it lightly. Let us pray. To the wise and loving Father, we acknowledge your presence and your power in this place. We thank you for our elective Commissioners that has the awesome responsibility of making decisions. Give them wisdom and knowledge to do what is just and what is right for all people for this county. We also thank you for the people who are here with concerns and desires. Give them the strength to accept the things that they cannot change. Give them the courage to change the things that they can and the wisdom to understand the difference between the two. Father, we ask you that you accept this agenda for tonight. We ask you also to give everyone here prosperity and health. And at the end of this meeting, give them a sweet spirit of peace. This I ask in the Most High. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening to everyone and welcome to the August 7, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. And if the Chairman would oblige me for just a moment, I did want to ask for the removal of item number five. This is a proclamation recognizing Representative Rhonda Burnow. This item will be moved to the next agenda. If I can get a motion to remove it.
So moved.
All second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
And Mr. Chairman, one last item. On page four, item F, the Recommendation for Contract Amendment, PSA number seventeen dash two twenty-eight, International Park. The request is to change the funding source. It currently has 2015 SPOSS programs, but the funding source is requested to be changed to 2009 SPOSS programs.
So the only change is moving from 2015 to 2009 SPOSS?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I place that in form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
Does any other board member have any recommendations?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to... Let me just a second. Remove item D under the Consent Agenda Recommendation for Award and Approval for Contract for Veterinary Services for the Police Department. Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous? I also have another one. This is a regular agenda item, Resolution 2018 dash seven eight, Authorizing Release of Net Proceeds From the Sale of the Rainwood Apartments to the Development Authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? And I would like to just make this statement that the county has IGA with the Development Authority where we have been paying to the fees or to pay the bonds yearly on a B Series. Right now, I think there's outstanding debt of about four million on the B Series bonds. They're requesting for the Development Authority to receive roughly about 4.4 million. My proposal is to take that 4.4 million, draw down on the six million, and then have to roughly pay about a million a year for the Development Authority on the bonds. Then the next two years, we can totally defeat the B Series bonds, which makes more sense to me as opposed to giving the money to the Development Authority and then we're still having to pay a million dollars till 2024. And that's a better use of taxpayers' money. And when we are facing the jet fuel crisis that we had and where we're facing a nine million dollar deficit, it only makes sense to save money where we can. And this is one of those areas where we can save money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let's keep order, please. Any other statements, questions?
No, I just concur, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to say also to everyone that submits the information, let's make sure that we have all information involved, all the financials and everything, including the closing documentation. As elected officials, we shouldn't have to request that. And so moving forward, the Economic Development Board needs to make sure that they provide us as well as the county with all of that information, the officials. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, statements? Hearing, those in favor of removing, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Any other amendments, deletions?
Yes, sir. I'm going to actually ask that we remove to the... That one item that we made the amendment on, which is item F on the Consent Agenda, that we move that to a separate item as well for a vote.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
Are there any further amendments?
I have one.
Mr. Stevenson.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove item G, the Budget Amendment Regarding Roof Repair at eleven seventeen Battle Creek Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, statements?
Yes, sir. I'm not understanding why we're not doing the things that we need to do for our public, considering that we are required to have a health department. It would make more sense to spend that two million to do the repairs as opposed to continuing to pay for the rental agreement for where the health department is. It just makes better financial sense to have a building that is free and clear of debt. This county needs to follow the, I would say, the path that Chick-fil-A has even shown for us who's right here in Jonesboro. When tough times, you've got to become debt-free as much as you can, so...
And let me say this, on this agreement, this is a state agency. And if the state kicks in, then I don't have a problem with the county kicking in. But this is a state agency. We are providing a facility, a building and all, and I think that's what we should do. We don't know how much this is going to end up costing the county and the county citizens.
It's going to cost 2.1 million.
That's an estimate.
Well...
Well, if the state, the state can kick in.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman. The bottom line is, we're required by the state to have a health department. That's our requirement. It's our requirement to provide them with the building. So I don't think that that's in question. What's in question is what's the better financial decision for us as a board, which is to be able to work on a building that is currently in existence, that is already paid off, as opposed to leaving them in a facility that we're continuously paying rent on and hoping the state does something. You can't make the state do anything like they really can't make us do anything. So we have to make better financial decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, my opinion on that is, we came to a conclusion or a decision with Dr. Bryant, the Director of Health Department, and we're going to temporarily put it somewhere for a year. And I think this gives us more time to look at a more modern building, something that we could really utilize. We keep putting money in this building and it's an old building. Right now, it's two million. You know, the estimates are two million, but we don't know. Once they get in there and start working, what we're going to find with... We know it's got mold and everything, so I say, let's don't rush this. We've got the health department situated for a year, so let's spend that time and allow time to actually find some decent facilities that will not keep us just pouring money. I mean, you just said yourself, it wastes of money. Let's not waste the money and not rush this.
Well, anytime you're spending money for the people, I don't see it as wasting money. So you're talking about a facility that if we start now, by the end of the year lease, we'll be able to move them back in. And the estimate, I trust, which was provided through our Building and Maintenance Director, and he had some other assessments done on it, is a pretty good number. So I place my trust and faith in that. But being the Chairman of the Board of Health as well, we are spread out throughout the county. Our WIC program went from eight thousand to two thousand. So there's mothers out there who are going without. They are inundating other counties. We have... There's vital programs that we have that our citizens are not able to benefit from simply because they're displaced, they being the Board of Health. So if you wait, hold on a second. So if you're saying, let's wait another year or two and then we have to renew another year's contract, then we're still at the starting point in terms of how long it's going to take to mitigate that building. And if you're talking about building a new facility, then number one, you've got to have a funding source. And then... Well, there's no... Trust me when I say that we looked all throughout this county for an adequate space where it would be a one-stop shop, provide all the services that our citizens need to make sure that they are properly taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we provided at least two different options to the health department. And the one that was chosen was on Phoenix Boulevard. We, if I'm not mistaken, that was a facility, buildings next to the regional hospital. Am I correct?
No, no, no. Yes, there were several buildings that we looked at for a temporary stay. That's why we entered a year's contract. The space was not ample enough. The hope has always been to be able to move back into the Battle Creek facility.
Okay, but I thought you said we weren't providing services to the citizens?
We are, but we're not there pared down greatly, simply because we don't have the space.
And Mr. Chair, I may add that I did my research and actually Henry, as well as Fayette County, has received notice that Clayton County is not receiving our vaccinations that we've received in the past because of our board dragging their feet on this decision. And so we've got to also remember too, that the health department is not just there for those that are in need. When you go to a restaurant, it's the health department that ensures that our citizens are eating in a place that is up to par and they don't have to worry about getting sick. It's several other things that the health department provides. And I would hope that this board is not taking the stance that they're taking because we feel that the folks, the citizens, that we're just giving them things. I said I would hope. So but the bottom line is, we've got to do our part to make sure that we're saving the taxpayers' money while we are also providing a service. And the finances does not equal to leaving them in a facility where we're continually paying rent on it. And if we can repair all these fire departments and all these other areas that have had mold, we've repaired several buildings with mold. Why is this building any different?
Commissioner, I agree that we save the taxpayer money, which is why I say that the state should kick in and not put all of this on our county citizens. Like you said, we have less money from the jet fuel tax and also let's let the state kick in a portion.
Just like we need to let the Development Authority kick in their money...
I concur.
...to help us save money too. All right, is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I call a question on that issue, please.
Thank you.
Yes. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. We did a whole lot of talking though. The two billion for the Board of Health.
So they don't want to...
Nay for me.
Nay.
That's three, two, it passes. All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, the Appointment to the Tourism Authority to Fill the Expiring Term of Gina McCombs. I'd like to hold that.
Is there a second?
Second?
No, sir.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Nay, three, two, it passes. Anything else?
I just want to make a comment. It's interesting because Gina is a CPA... Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I didn't wait till you acknowledged me.
I apologize.
But Gina McCombs is a well-versed CPA and I think that we would do justice to keep her on that board, just as it has been recommended. She's extremely knowledgeable, so...
All right, any other amendments, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for an executive session on the topic of personnel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Three, one, I mean, four, one, it passes. Anything else?
I just think that we need to make sure we have something in place to keep people from making decisions the last few months that they have to make decisions. And then we've got to start all over in January. And Mr. Chair, one second. Mr. Chair, I say that not to be...
Let's have order, please. Let's have order.
I say that not to be out of order or to be rude, but I have looked at the best practices and other counties do not allow such changes or changes to be made as somebody is going through election season or when they going out of their seat. We need to change that. Oh, well.
And I think that is one of the items that's up.
It is?
Yes.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none.
I'd like to add two emergency items. One is, these have already been advertised. They deal with an adoption, establishment of the net mils rates for credit rollback for reassessment of Clayton County Fiscal Year 2018. This is Resolution 2018 eighty-four to... Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. To authorize a levy and collection of property taxes at a rate required by the State of Georgia to cover expenditures associated with the maintenance and operation of the county and activities necessary and incidental thereto. Cover expenditures associated with the prison and fire service to authorize a mill rate credit rollback equal to taxes collected from the 1% local option sales tax. To authorize the Chairman to execute the certification of official rates together with any other document pertaining to such mill rates to provide for effective date of the resolution for other purposes. And also Resolution 2018 eighty-five, which is a resolution to acknowledge receipt of the permanent and final net mil rate after credit rollback for values added by reassessment for 2018, 2019, adopted by the Clayton County School District, to provide for the proposed levy and collection of property taxes at such certified rate for the support and maintenance of public schools, public education and activities necessary and incidental thereto, to provide for effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
So is that two or three up?
It's two separate ones, 2018 eighty-four and 2018 eighty-five.
Okay, I'll place that in form of a motion and ask that it be placed on the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
Are there any further amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved.
Say a second.
One second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Four, one, it passes.
Next, the Board will be presenting a proclamation. Clayton County observes September seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2018, as Constitution Week, as presented by Chairman Turner. Will the Daughters of the American Revolution please come forward as the Commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation?
Yep.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes Constitution Week September seventeenth through twenty-third, 2018. Whereas September seventeenth, 2018, begins the national celebration of Constitution Week. The Constitution of the United States of America stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties and freedom and to ensure those inalienable rights for every American. And whereas this year marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is the belief of the Daughters of the American Revolution that those who wrote the Constitution believe that no government can create freedom, but that governments must guard freedom rather than encroach upon the freedoms of its people. And whereas the tradition of celebrating the Constitution began in 1955 when the DAR petitioned our Congress of the United States of America, the Congressional Resolution was later adopted and signed into law on August second, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas the goals of the celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, preserving it for posterity, inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, encourage the study of the historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September seventeen eighty-seven. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, 2018, as Constitution Week in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to read and study this historical document that serves as the foundation of which our great nation was built upon. In witness thereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventh day of August in the year 2018. The Board will now hear a presentation on the MARTA quarterly briefing as presented by MARTA's General Manager, CEO, Jeffrey Parker.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and members of the Clayton County Board of Directors. Thank you for having me here today. I'd like to personally thank the two Clayton County Board members who are here. Board Member Abdul Salam, who is right over there, and Board Member Jerry Griffin. I'd like to personally thank them. They've, in the four months that I've been at MARTA, they have given me a lot of wise counsel about MARTA in general and specifically about Clayton County. So it's been a pleasure to work with them and for them. And finally, just as a quick point, I'd like to point out and thank John Bialis, who has been involved in Clayton County over the years. John is right here. He is taking a position at the ARC and will be leaving MARTA and we wish him well. And I appreciate all the hard work that he's done for MARTA as well as Clayton County. So thank you, John.
Yeah, and before you go on, just let me make a comment about John. He's always been accessible and he's always been very detailed. So I appreciate all that you've done while you were with MARTA here. Let's give him a round of applause.
I think I turned it a little red, so it was a success. So we're going to talk about a few items, the budget, give you an overview of where we stand, the status of the Fifteenth Amendment, what we've been doing with the federal grant program, and just some information about the state of our service. We've approved our FY19 adopted budget. It is just below a billion dollars, a little bit under half a billion dollars for operating and about the same amount, 485 million for capital expenses. Highlights of the budget include funding a complete replacement of our railcar procurement, which will be over about, close to about a 10-year period, as well as a significant investment replacing about half of our buses. We, you know, we really have put together a great budget. It includes a fifth year in a row of no fare increases and we've been able to support some service additions into the FY19 budget. We do need to, excuse me, we do need to continue to manage the system for the future and make sure that our revenues are outpacing our expenses. So we need to focus on cost containment over the years. We will need to institute fare increases and we will be working with the Board of Directors and our customers to manage that in the future. And, you know, we need to make sure that there's just a long-term sustainability of the system so that we can continue to operate efficiently and provide the great services that we provide to the community. One of the things that we've done is we've done some debt refinancing into a variable rate, just overall reducing the cost. We, last board meeting, we undertook two transactions, ultimately at saving significant money to the authority in terms of refinancing. So it was a successful financial maneuver that we were able to accomplish. The Fifteenth Amendment, as you know, is critical to the future success and sustainability of our system. We are getting, you know, we do need to make sure that we have a long-term support over 30 years. We need to finance bonds over 30 years. And so we clearly need to make sure that we intend to and continue to work with the jurisdictions on the Fifteenth Amendment. We have some, we plan on coming back to the county over the fall in order to implement it. We do need to recognize that some of the jurisdictions, in particular DeKalb County, do need to add projects to the engineering list so that we can make sure that all of the MARTA projects are covered and are continued to be projects between MARTA and the jurisdictions and don't blend over into the ATL process that was established. We are good with all of the projects that we have identified in Clayton County. So we've included all those projects on the engineering list and we don't need to add anything for that. So we will be coming back to you. We do want to make sure that we work to, one of the concerns that was raised in the past was over TOD and we propose some language that will include better collaboration between the jurisdictions and MARTA over TOD. So once we send a legal document, which we will be doing this fall, we have 60 days to get three of the four jurisdictions to pass the Fifteenth Amendment. And it's critical, as I said, that we include all of the projects into the engineering report prior to the December first deadline under the House Bill 930. Under federal grant programs, we've made some significant progress. We rewarded a $3.6 million grant of the bus and bus facility that is allowing us to procure and upgrade some 40-foot buses to 60-foot compressed natural gas buses. And we expect these buses to come in over the next 24 months. We also have some opportunities that we are exploring right now. We have a low and no emission vehicle grant that we put in for, as well as a transit security grant program. The low and no emission vehicle program, we hope to fund the beginning and look at electric buses and see whether or not electric buses will fit our marketplace and ultimately reduce our overall operating costs. And the bus and bus maintenance facility, as well as build grants, will be coming up later this year. And we will continue to work with the local elected officials to find the right projects to advance. In terms of the state of service that we have, I'd like to talk a little bit about where we stand with the More MARTA program in Clayton County. Going to just step through this really quickly. We've identified... We've identified, kind of, identified four really big-picture items that need to be addressed as we advance the projects. And I think we've made tremendous progress here. You know, we have worked to do planning on initiatives around corridors. We do have a fiscally constrained plan, so we know what we need to advance. The vote that the citizens here took several years ago identified a funding source, and now we are in the development phase, which will eventually lead to the implementation beyond the bus service that we've already enhanced and started here in Clayton County. So, overall map of the expansion that we've done, I'm not going to dwell on this too long. This is really the details of what we've done. The one-cent sales tax brings in about forty-eight million dollars a year. As you know, we do have an escrow balance that is being kept by MARTA to invest in future fixed guideway systems, and that's about seventy-three million dollars right now. And to date, we've implemented nine buses with sixteen thousand riders, which is up seventeen percent from previous years. We've also made a commitment to work on a maintenance facility, a police precinct, park-and-ride lots, and other transit amenities that I'll talk about in a minute. In terms of the nine routes, I think it's worthwhile pointing out that two of the routes are in the top ten. The one-ninety-six in particular is a very, very productive route and really a corridor within the county that we need to enhance with improvements through techniques like bus rapid transit. So that's something that we will be focusing on as we develop our future plans. The Transit Initiatives has looked at several alignments for the fixed route. And we, you know, we recognize that we're beginning to move to the Board of Directors an option for this that would include a locally preferred alternative. The next step that we're looking at is really making sure that the other improvements within the county to the bus service and other appropriate improvements in order to kind of maximize ridership are done alongside and in consultation with the investment that we want to do in this corridor. We have worked closely with the Citizen Advisory Group, Fifteen-Meter Group. It's met quarterly. I'm hoping to meet with them over the end of the summer or the fall, really to better understand their priorities and make sure that we're listening well to the priorities of the citizens, as well as the elected officials. And they've really served well as advocates for public transportation here in Clayton County. So, we will be advancing the locally preferred alternative that I spoke about a minute ago to the board, hopefully this fall. Although, the project will be advancing while we're preparing to advance that locally preferred alternative. And we're also looking to make sure that we've got our comprehensive system plan, and it all fits together, and that we're advancing this overall program together as a single plan to improve transit here in the corridor. So we're looking at high-capacity transit routes. And as I said earlier, the one-ninety-six route is really the most productive route, and I think there's some great opportunities to improve service along that route. So, we, you know, the focus on the one-ninety-six route and also continued coordination with Norfolk Southern are the next steps that we will do as we develop, you know, arterial bus rapid transit and bus rapid transit in the corridor, as well as the fixed route service along the Norfolk Southern corridor. The operation and maintenance facility, we've got site selection underway. It's really our intention to include regional bus paratransit facility, as well as a permanent location for the MARTA police. And we hope to advance an environmental survey in 2018 with site design and land acquisition in 2019. And clearly, we'll be, you know, working with the county and stakeholders to make sure that we make the right decisions and right investments there. Amenities, these are the shelters that are in this, currently in the system. We have a focus on bringing more amenities, and we hear loud and clear that there's a desire to make sure that the bus service that we run includes these amenities. So this is, this is an example of what some of the shelters look like that have been installed. I believe this is one of the newer shelters that was installed. These are four locations where we plan on putting some more shelters in. In fact, someone was just asking me about these locations just a minute ago. And then we have a clear plan over a longer period of time to prioritize additional shelters. We need to do site surveys and make sure that we can physically install and work with the community along those bus corridors to make sure these are the right locations. And then we have twenty-three potential other site locations that we have planning. Another area, this is, this, well, before I move to that, we also have an opportunity to partner with other groups, and we're happy to do that. Groups who have approached MARTA in order to install shelters with their own funds are willing to work with any individual who wants to invest in amenity along our system. The other thing is that we're just finalizing a procurement that we will be bringing to the board, and I want to make sure that it fits in with the shelter program. This procurement is around an advertising contract for benches. And I want to make sure that we have clarity around a prioritization of getting shelters in the right spot for amenities and then leveraging an advertising contract that will have revenue, that will have some level of sharing between the county and MARTA in order to bring additional benches to the bus system. So, the other thing that we're doing is a big investment in our vertical transportation. The elevators and escalators in Bold are the elevators and escalators that we've advanced and are doing investment in now. We have a five-to-ten-year-period program. We're going to overhaul all of our elevators and escalators throughout the system. This is the beginning of it, and it's really critical to making sure that patrons can access the system. Recent community events that we've held are summarized here. We need to continue to work with the community, support the community, and build awareness of the services that we provide. So we look to continue to do things like this. And, you know, the South Metro Empowerment Alliance, we'll be meeting with them shortly. So we're looking forward to that. And then really a highlight of things that are going on, a lot of information in the newspaper. Gwinnett County, I just want to summarize that as I close out to talk about what's going on in Gwinnett County. They have, the Commission has approved a contract for MARTA service. We expect that the Board of Directors will be voting on that next month to enter into a contract to allow, for a referendum to be held, which will ultimately allow MARTA to, excuse me, Gwinnett County to join the MARTA district. I think it's really exciting. We've been talking about years and years of having a larger transit environment here. It started clearly with Clayton County several years ago, when Clayton County stepped up and joined MARTA. So I think it's an exciting opportunity. Gwinnett County is looking to fund an extension of the Doraville Line, the Gold Line, into Gwinnett County and serve directly the eighty-five corridor. So I thought it was important to share some information about what's going on in the northern parts of the potential MARTA district. So with that, I'll open it up to questions, and thank you for spending time and listening to me.
All right, any questions for Mr. Parker?
I would like to make a comment. First of all, once again, thank you to John for all the hard work. We really appreciate it. I also want to thank them for working with us to analyze the stops on Terror Boulevard. And so there is a white paper that we've been working on diligently. I didn't see over there, Ben A. Ben. But we've been working on diligently, so I want to get that to the entire board once we feel comfortable with it. The other thing, however, though, is we've got to do something, and I think it rests upon our board, as well as getting with the Sheriff's Department. We've got to fix the stop in front of Jim Huey Recreation Center. We've discussed it, but I do want to make sure that you keep it at the forefront. We've got to exhaust all possible measures because it's blocking the entrance into Jim Huey. And we got to figure that part out, even if we go in and we have to reconfigure, Mr. Chairman, just that area of the back of the parking lot, it's a median there, but those buses block traffic, so you can't see who's coming, and you're trying to turn around the buses. And so that's been a constant concern. But it's my understanding that we've got to come together as a board to figure out how to mitigate that issue because that is our property and Sheriff's Department and so forth. So I'm looking forward to that. And I want to say, too, I'm looking forward to rail coming. I'm excited about it. We don't need anything holding it up. We don't need anything holding it up. That's the one thing that I know that the citizens have been talking about and they've been wanting. And so whatever we got to work through, we're not going to get all the pieces in the beginning. But if we can get that train going right down through Clayton County, I don't care if it's a light rail, heavy rail, at the end of the day, it just needs to work and go from point A to point B and be efficient. So I'm looking forward to that. I want to make sure I put that on record as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely want rail, but we want it the right way.
Yeah, we want rail, and, you know, the one thing is that not, this is not going to delay the advancement and the planning and the design of a rail system and what we need to do with Norfolk Southern. But we also make, need to make sure simultaneously we're advancing that comprehensive plan so that we're serving, you know, some of the bus routes that you have here are just so productive. We've got great opportunities to make improvements to them and just ultimately drive more ridership, get more people to jobs, connect people into the MARTA system. So it's an exciting time here in Clayton County.
Any other questions from?
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, thank you. Also, Mr. John, Ms. Bialis, thank you. From the time when we were working to try to get MARTA into Clayton County, you've come out to all of our community meetings, and you've sat at a lot of festivals that I'm sure you did not want to be there. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding, but I appreciate it. You sat at a lot of festivals. Mr. Parker, do you have any estimate of how many Clayton County people have been employed since MARTA has been in Clayton County?
You know, I don't. That came, someone was asking me that just the other day. Let us get back to you about that. And I think there's a good focus around some of the projects that we have to make sure we are always hiring bus operators. And I want a particularly, a big need for bus operators. That's our biggest, you know, job that we have at MARTA. And, you know, particularly with bus operators and just in general, we need to make sure that we're reaching out to the communities that we serve. So I'll get back to you with that information. But I think there's a bigger initiative to make sure that we're doing everything we can.
I really appreciate that. I know, again, when MARTA was first, when we had the campaign going, when MARTA was trying to get Clayton County on board, there were a lot of job fairs. And during one of the presentations, it was probably before you or since you've been here, I don't know. But I was disappointed at the number of people, you know, that from Clayton County that MARTA has hired and has these buses leave out of Clayton County going downtown. We'd like to have some of these people going and getting some of those good jobs.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Parker, talking about the broader comprehensive regional plan, the, Mr. Tomlinson from the interim director at ATL had an orientation on House Bill nine thirty recently. And I had the good fortune of attending it. And as he laid out, he explained how after the new ATL board is populated, the new ATL will phase in or will absorb Serta, I think, through 2019, and then Greta through 2020, and ultimately MARTA in 2021, accepting the operation of heavy rail.
MARTA will, everything up to the way you explained MARTA is, my understanding of the bill, MARTA will remain as an entity, a legal entity as it was when we were established, as it was when Clayton County joined the MARTA district. So we continue to be a separate entity and authority, and we will maintain the contracts that we have with the jurisdictions that we serve. What the responsibility of the ATL will have within the MARTA jurisdiction is that projects that are not on our engineering report will need to get coordinated with the ATL organization. They will also be responsible for putting forward a comprehensive transit plan into thirteen metro area. And then the other piece of that is we will, the bill requires a shift in terms of branding. And beginning next year, we will begin to have to adopt an ATL brand. I don't know how that, you know, we need to work through the details of whether that means the brand of MARTA phases out or whether it's co-branded with MARTA. Those are details that Chris Tomlinson and I have been talking about. Ultimately, the board, when it's established, will obviously weigh into how that lays out as well. And at the end of the day, the anticipated action of ATL in terms of branding is really to simplify across the thirteen regions to allow customers to see it as a single system, even though MARTA would act as an independent authority as it is today.
You were at Mr. Tomlinson's presentation.
I've seen his presentation. He was, he, you know, he's on the MARTA board. We've talked a lot about it. The Scott Haggard, who works, he's the first employee of the ATL, was at the MARTA board presenting it and talking through the details of it just earlier, or last week.
Okay, I appreciate your opinion because his presentation talked about the MARTA operating heavy rail after 2021 and the rest of those operations being absorbed into ATL. But you're saying that you disagree with that and that MARTA will continue to operate all of the services it provides for the penny that we're paying?
That is correct. And we would continue to have a contract with you. The one, you know, the one piece outside of the MARTA district is that the House Bill nine thirty requires that any heavy rail extension or new heavy rail system in the thirteen-county district would be operated and owned by MARTA as an entity.
And if I may state, I was at that same meeting, so I didn't...
I know you showed up right at when the meeting ended, but let me finish, and I appreciate the respect.
No, that's not true.
We're going to keep the order. Go ahead and finish your question, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, I'm done. I just didn't want to be interrupted.
Kamish, thank you.
You know what, I'm glad you're showing your gentleman side today. But any rate, I apologize. I didn't walk away with that conclusion, and I met again with John and Ben and everyone. And it is my understanding, and make sure I'm right, that because of the timing of where Clayton County joined MARTA, it gives us those levels of protection, in particular with rail in the bus system and so forth, where we're going to be able to move forward with those plans that we have in place, and we can continue to work through the transit options for rail. Am I correct? Is that correct? Okay, thank you so very much.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
And the final presentation for this evening is a review of the draft Arrow ATL Greenway Plan. Will the presenter please come forward? Please state your name and...
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, just a second for me, sir. Okay, sir, please proceed.
Sure. Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am Stan Reecey. I'm here from the Atlanta Aratropolis Community Improvement Districts. I'm here to present our draft recommendations from our Arrow ATL Greenway Plan. It's in the final stages of completion right now. You can see our project schedule...
Did you state your name for the record?
Stan Reecey.
Stan Reecey.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You can see our project schedule here. This is actually from August of 2017 to June of 2018, so we're actually beyond that. So, again, we are in the completion phase of this. We've had three rounds of public outreach, as well as three rounds of meetings with local staffs and partners to develop the priorities, plans, and vision for a comprehensive greenway network throughout the Aratropolis area. So you can see the scope of our project here is the area about five miles, give or take, outside the fence of the airport. So, for your purposes, you're talking the northwest corner of Clayton County, as well as portions of the city of Forest Park. And the, again, the intention of this study is building on the Aratropolis Alliance Blueprint document to deliver a trail network recommendation throughout this area that also leverages existing investments and strategies to give residents options for mobility other than simply, you know, autom... to give residents uh, options for uh, mobility other than uh, simply, you know, automobile or transit-based services as well, or, or augmenting those, those choices. So uh, the end result of all of these efforts is this kind of hairball of three hundred fifty miles of trails that you see before you. Um, without trying to give you any vision uh, problems staring at that too long. To kind of summarize it, what you're seeing is a sort of backbone of trails in a loop in the area immediately adjacent to the airport. Another loop uh, slightly outside of that. And then you have spokes that sort of connect between those. And those are those trails kind of shown in red, those thicker red lines. The lighter colored sort of purple lines are the more regional connectors within uh, different partner jurisdictions. So taking into consideration the fact that we're not going to be able to implement, you know, three hundred fifty miles of trails overnight, you have to do some prioritization of what are the priorities within each of the partner jurisdictions that helped us do this plan. And so that's represented in these green trails that you see here. Um, there are eleven uh, sort of priority trails that are gonna be part of this eventual whole. You know, at first, it's kind of, not going to look much like a network, but uh, it's going to come together over time as we continue to invest in this vision. And so within those uh, broader priorities, we narrow down even further to what we call model miles. So the idea behind having a model mile uh, in each of our jurisdictions is to get people sold on the concept of having these trails, you know, that we can have this system in South Metro of connected trails the same as you're seeing implemented elsewhere within Mel, Metro Atlanta. Uh, and so the uh, model miles, again, are these kind of yellow highlighted with uh, those ovals circling them that you see here. And so for Clayton County, for unincorporated Clayton near uh, the airport, we have this uh, what we're calling the Flint River Connection. So uh, working a, again, with uh, community stakeholders, as well as uh, county staff, this greenway route was the one that came to the top, um, which runs in an area that is uh, more wooded along, believe it or not, the, the Flint River, which begins, if you're familiar, north of the airport, runs underneath the runways and then comes out there just under uh, south of two eighty-five. And so uh, there's a very kind of scenic area that winds its way between two eighty-five and Forest Parkway. And it's, you know, a nice kind of green space that is actually separated from a lot of the, you know, kind of industrial land use. So we think that would be a great amenity for people in the area. Um, it does not have uh, you know, steep incline. It's, you know, easy for a lot of different people to access. Um, and again, it's part of this broader idea of connecting these regional trails, because uh, we've worked especially with the Clayton County Water Authority, and they've got ambitions to uh, develop some parkland when that quarry goes offline. It's just kind of south of that area that you're looking at there, farther in the future. But we want to have it teed up where we can uh, have a trail that connects into that. And the estimated cost of that uh, total one point two mile trail uh, would be roughly five million dollars. And so here you can see uh, rendering, we think this is, this is pretty neat. It demonstrates the vision of what you're looking at is sort of, you're looking northwest towards the airport. Um, you can see the, the Flint River watershed running through what's kind of a forested area right in there. Uh, and then there's uh, greenways, there's a greenway adjacent to it, and there's public access down to the area uh, immediately on the waterfront. People can actually access the water even. And so this could be a, you know, a, a great park amenity in this particular corner of the county. So uh, to give a little wrap up, uh, the remaining schedule, we are uh, asking for comments on the final document uh, that will be made available to you through your staff. Uh, we're requesting comment by August thirtieth. And then we're going to uh, collect those comments, make any final adjustments or changes to the plan as necessary, and then come back and present that for uh, formal approval. And um, the uh, that, that will occur probably sometime in uh, September to October, depending on how many changes we need to make to the plan. And uh, any comments, please provide to the email noted there. That is my boss, Kristen Moat. And uh, once again, uh, thanks for having me up here. Uh, I can address any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Reese?
One quick one, sir. Uh, thank you for the presentation. And you mentioned about the Water Authority. Is that the Finding the Flint Project that you were referencing, that they are leading or part of?
So the uh, Finding the Flint, from my understanding, is being led um, by an individual from a consultant group that is using money from Atlanta Regional Commission, um, to my best understanding. And uh, they have worked very closely with the Water Authority on that. Being as, really, that's where the, the Flint River rises, you know, there, again, south of two eighty-five. And that's where it starts to really um, be a substantial feature in that corner of Clayton County.
Do you happen to know how much collaboration you all have had between other, or is it just coming through the Water Authority, that collaboration?
Um, has the Eritropolis had with?
Yes, sir.
With Clayton County, um, we've worked with.
With the Finding the Flint Project, 'cause that project is gaining a lot of speed.
Oh, yes.
And steam.
Yep, we've, we've worked with them as well, also on the Fulton County side. Um, again, where the, the Flint actually begins in um, East Point, then running through Pateville. It's, it's more of a culvert than anything, but uh, at that point. But yes, uh, that actually cuts pretty much straight through the Eritropolis, so we've been working very closely with them on that.
Mr. Chair, one more point. I, I saw some people that have been serving on that committee out in the audience. If you'd stand, please. They've been working hard to make sure that Clayton County is at the table. Thank you so much to Sid Cox and everyone else. Thank you for making sure that uh, Clayton County is at the table for that project. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes. How are you all going to notify the public regarding the um, feedback on uh, improvements or any recommendations they may have?
Yes, uh, we'll have the document made available online, uh, once it has been formally adopted. We've gone through, you know, several rounds of community engagement during the actual development of the recommendations. Um, and then if there are, you know, any further comments, bear in mind that, you know, this document essentially is taking the ball further down the field after the uh, the blueprint. So this isn't something that, you know, we're ready to take this and this is going to be implemented, you know, turned into engineers to, you know, design documents for immediately. There's still going to be uh, plenty of conversations around the exact potential alignment of trails and uh, you know, funding opportunities. So uh, this, again, is, you would think of as kind of an interim uh, step in that process of delivering these trails. And there will be, you know, multiple opportunities to engage the public throughout.
Okay, thank you.
And I know it'll be on the Eritropolis website, but as the project uh, progresses, if you can share, post that information so we can put it on our website as well.
Correct.
Clayton County Parks anyway.
Yeah, um, it's uh, it's just arrow C I D's, A E R O C I D S dot com.
Yeah, and that's great, but we want it on ClaytonCountyGA.gov.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the consent agenda. The board is to consider approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
With the exception of item D and item G, F has been moved to the regular board agenda.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I have a second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Chuck Reed, Legal Department. I'm sorry, if you could hold on for just a second. Item F was removed from the consent agenda and placed on the board of gen, board agenda. If we can go back to that item. Carol Rogers, Central Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, Commissioners. I have won the recommendation for contract amendment of PSA seventeen dash two twenty-eight, which is International Park South Perimeter Trail, Phase Four for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to increase the total award to the Path Foundation, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia, in the total amount of eighty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, which is an increase of ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. The request is due to an additional design and structural engineering of a bridge across the entrance of International Park at West Stevens Road, at Walt Stevens Road. Funding is available through the two thousand and fifteen SPOLOSP program. The request is for you to approve this recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, not a question, but I wanted to have this separate, simply because I think, and uh, the trails are great. Um, it has done, um, it's added more to us as a county. However, my concern is that we're constantly adding more and spending more, when I do feel that we can do better on collaborating with uh, Transportation and Development, because these funds could have been found through Transportation and Development, as other counties have done. And then secondly, more than anything, it's interesting that you said that, Ms. Deborah. My concern, just in my, my whole being, I have a problem with how quickly that Path Foundation was built and put in place in Spivey. But as a mother, it grieves my soul to see mothers still holding to the sh, uh, side of the road with their children, or even men trying to get to work. And so for me, I just, I, I can't support that for that reason, uh, when we're not pushing those sidewalks through. That same SPOLOSP dollars could be used to make, get the sidewalks done. It's taking way too long for our sidewalks while Spivey's gonna be riding around in golf carts. It's very disturbing to me.
Commissioner Adams.
Ms. Rogers, help me understand, the two thousand and nine SPOLOSP referendum that was voted on by the people provided a certain dollar amount for green space trail, for green space acquisition and development, and then a separate line item for roads and sidewalks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So these funds couldn't have been used on sidewalks by law?
Right, it is based on how it was approved by the, the um, the taxpayers.
But let me say this, Mr. Chairman. It's not that. It's, for me, it's the fact that there, it is, it is evident. You can look at the video. The video on Clayton County SPOLOSP had one commissioner on there, and it only showed the trails. The bottom line is, we could have been working collaborati, collaboratively with Transportation and Development to make sure that sidewalks were going in at the same time. As I shared with Chairman, I know that. But I shared with Chairman, the bottom line is you have people that don't see those sidewalks going in. If we put all our attention over there, then we need to put our attention somewhere else. And let me make this comment. This county moves funds back and forth, and we find ways to move funds back and forth. And I'm one of those people. We can find a way to make sure we get done what we need to get done. It might not be able to come right out of that basket into another area, but that ten thousand could have gone someplace else and been in another basket. And the money that was in that basket could go over to the uh, sidewalks. And then you also could connect those areas eighty-five into a trail. Who's to say they can't have that there? But I don't have time for semantics.
And let me say this. Let's uh, use this as a point of reference moving forward as to exactly what uh, the commissioner said. I know where it hard is, and it is truly about our, our kids and our, the females throughout the county. But uh, to uh, even uh, Commissioner Edmondson's point, this money was earmarked by the citizens and the taxpayers. And I don't think we can deviate from that, but moving forward, especially with the twenty twenty-one SPOLOSP, I think, we can do a whole lot in that area. And one of the focal points, we need, it needs to be sidewalks throughout the county.
I'm, I'm gonna be done. Let me ask you a question. Does that trail go along the side of that road, on the side of the um, the International Park?
Not that I'm aware of, but I.
It does. I saw it the other day. So you know what? The same pathway we just saw, we can have a trail in someplace else other than Spivey. You can call it sidewalk trail. You can make it happen. I'm sorry, Chair.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Nay.
It's four of one that passes.
Thank you.
Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Would you like me to take these, Chairman?
One at a time.
All right, the first is uh, ordinance twenty eighteen sixty-seven. An ordinance adopting one of the home rule powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, amending Clayton County Code of Ordinances, specifically relevant sections of the Clayton County Public Employee Eligible Deferred Compensation Plan, permitting in-service withdrawals by eligible participants to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
The next is Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventy-eight, which is a resolution authorizing release of the net proceeds from the sale of the Rainwood Apartments to the Development Authority to authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
So a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? And again, I'll just state, it's my request that we use this money to draw down on the outstanding debt on the bond and then use the next two years to pay it off, which would free up money, especially in lieu of, or in light of us losing our jet fuel tax money. Again, that's just my two cents worth.
Yes, sir. And if I may add, I want to say that our first obligation is to the county, as elected officials of this board. And for us to make a decision, anything, any decision different from what you stated, then uh, we need to rethink while we're here, as um, Ms. Ansley stated it.
Any other questions or statements? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three two that passes.
The next uh, item is Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventy-nine, which is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners to televise public comment to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, I'll second the motion. Are there any questions or statements?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Evans.
Make a motion to amend the motion to televise public comment at, and, but to adjust the agenda to have public comment at the end of the agenda?
Please, let's keep order. All right, there's a minute motion on the table to move public comment to the end of the meetings. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any questions or statements?
Yes, sir. I, I would say that I do not recommend that, because then it does not give the citizens the ability to be able to speak to what's on the agenda, and so I don't recommend that.
And I wholeheartedly agree with that. Uh, when we first started this, part of the reason why uh, I've, I'm the one who brought the idea to uh, start televising the uh, meetings, and it was just for that purpose, to make sure that our citizens had a voice that could, they could possibly say something that can get us as a board to change our mind or look into a different or another direction. And I think that is only fair to our citizens, because again, we work for them and not the other way around. So they need to be, they need to be heard, 'cause sometimes, uh, when they call our offices, sometimes they can't get through to the people they're calling. Therefore, their ability to come before a commission meeting, to speak before the collective body, is important to me. And it's important to me before time and not at the end.
Okay.
Any other questions or statements? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes.
Nay.
Nay, it's three two that passes. Yeah, that was on the amended, on the vote at the end. Now, we still need to take uh, a vote on the original, which is to vote on it as is, as it used to be rather. Uh, and that's public comment at the beginning.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what it was?
I'm sorry.
We just amended the original by majority, so.
She didn't amend her, her uh, motion?
As a board, we did.
No, we should have took a vote on the motion first and then the amendment.
Do we need to take that, yes, we should have took the uh, regular motion first.
First motion first.
Correct.
Right.
No?
Okay, clarify, 'cause you were telling me something different.
You voted on the amendment, now you're voting on the amended motion, which is to televise, to televise it at the end for me.
That's what we just voted on.
No, you voted on the amendment.
You voted on the amendment. You amended the motion.
To, to make the. To make the amendment, I'm with you, I'm, I'm with you. Okay. So, was, did we already take a motion on that?
You're taking a motion now?
No, we already took the motion, on the, on the amended. Now we're taking a motion on the, uh, on your amended motion.
I think that's wrong. It was made, the motion was made, seconded, it was amended, the amended was approved, now we simply need to call the vote on the original.
No, not on the original, on the amended one.
A motion to adopt the amended resolution.
So a second motion needs, a new motion needs to be-
Okay, hold on a second, 'cause everybody's confusing each other. Jack, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Clarify it and make it real clear.
That was made and seconded, there was an amendment to that motion that passed. So now you have a resolution before you that is to televise public comment, but to do so at the end, but to move it to the end of the meeting.
And that's the only motion we need to present at this time? Right. All right. So Commissioner Edmondson had made the motion, and is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, there's-
Already on second.
No, it's already-
We just need to take the vote.
Right.
Just need to take the vote, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three two, it passes. It's effect, it's effective immediately, for those of you acquiring.
Let's go to the next one, Mr. Chairman.
Shall I go on?
Yes, come on.
Okay. Next is Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the-
Hold on a second, uh, Mr. Reed. Too much talking going on. All right, proceed, sir.
Uh, the next is Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the Housing Authority of Clayton County for the benefit of TBG Renaissance Senior LP and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions? I have a question, is this the same development that was clear, asked, or passed by this board a long time ago, but at that time, they said it was strictly and only for existing property, but within Exhibit B, it says that it is, uh, for construction and equipping of a hundred and sixty unit multifamily housing project. So it seems like to me they're building as well.
This is, this has come before you before, but at the time it came before you before, it was for a lower amount, and with the passage of time, they've had to make some adjustments. This is the, this is the person for the Housing Authority. They've had to make some adjustments, adjustments based on findings and financing and stuff like that, so they're coming back to the board. There's no financial impact to the county at all. This is something that they have to go through that step in order for them to be able to use the Housing Authority's, um, use the Housing Authority's bond power.
Yeah, but at the same time, I was under the impression that was to renovate old existing building, because I asked the question whether or not there was any, would this be new construction? And I want to say and believe that I was told no. I'm just looking for clarification.
According to the doc, documentation here, it's the acquisition, construction, and equipping of approximately a hundred and sixty multifamily housing project for senior, that the, that they are acquiring that property.
They're acquiring, what is it, twelve acres?
Right.
Of new, that's twelve new acres. 'Cause you wouldn't need to acquire any acreage if you already owned it.
You're saying that the purchaser does not own the property, that's correct. Right. Is that what you're asking? You're asking, are they buying the property? Yes, they are.
No, I thought this, this bond, as it was presented the first time, from my understanding, my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, was to renovate those apartment complexes at six thirty-nine Garden Walk Boulevard, and I specifically asked a question whether or not, 'cause six thirty-nine's, is apartment complex I'm familiar with, and it's been existing for a while. And this seems like they're building new, a new, new complex.
My understanding is that they're-
It's always been new.
That they're-
Right, it was never about renovating any, anything. It was always about building senior housing on Garden Walk Boulevard.
I don't recall that being the conversation. I, I have to look at the minutes, but I don't think that's the conversation. Okay, I won't prolong that.
Okay, I, I can get you more information on that if you need to-
The vote will be over by then, so I stick by, by my, uh, recollection. Is there any other questions or statements? And this is a project that is, uh, for the seniors, I don't have a problem with that, we need to take care of our seniors. I just want to make sure that we're receiving accurate information.
I concur, Mr. Chairman, and what I want to say is we need to stop getting caught up in the subject line and, um, pay attention to the details, which, which is what we've been doing. So I want the citizens to hear that. So as the vote go forth, it's not that we're not possibly in favor of senior housing, it's the fact that a lot of times people take advantage of, um, your heartstrings, 'cause you want to help seniors, and they keep patting on and patting on and patting on, so.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three two, it passes. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The next is Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-two, is a resolution to provide for the support of the current policies of the county to provide an effective-
Please, if you have to have a conversation with somebody, please do so out, uh, uh, out back. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-two is a resolution to provide for support of the current policies of the county to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions?
I just want to state, as I stated earlier, that other jurisdictions do not allow for certain changes to take place at a critical time of transitioning a board or those that are running for office, and I think this is critical for us to be able to continue to conduct our business efficiently and effectively as, um, elected officials on behalf of the citizens.
And I echo that same sentiment, there's still gotta be accountability. All right, any other questions or statements? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Uh, we would like to, in addition to the personnel to add litigation to the executive session.
Just litigation?
Yes, to the, um, to the, when there's already for existing person, I think it was a personnel request already.
Personnel and litigation.
Yes.
'Cause I have a litigation matter as well, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Attorney Reed, did we adopt eighty-four and eighty-five?
I believe that the chairman asked to put that on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There, would you, um, like to make a motion to add litigation to the executive session with somebody?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
Okay, at this time, we'll have board appointments. First, we have an appointment to the Board of Appeals to fill the expiring term of Dr. William Hill, the term is three years, expiring on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one for board appointment. Do we have any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we reappoint Dr. William Hill to that board.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three two, it fails?
And that's, and Mr. Chairman, if I may note, that I looked at the attendance, and there are those on that board that are out of compliance of the bylaw, so we need to review that.
That's Demont, right?
Is there another, uh, recommendation, recommendation rather?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recommend Ms. Mrs. Kathy Robison, Kathy with a K.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three two, it passes. Next appointment is to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Tyrone Keith, who resigned. The term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty, Commissioner Hambrick's appointment.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Ricky Lovelace, who I think is here tonight. Will you stay in, please?
All right, is there a second?
Thank you.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Solid Waste Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Victor Letts Senior, the term is for four years, expiring on August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, full board appointment, any recommendations? I'm gonna ask that we hold that till next meeting, Madam Clerk. All right, last is the appointment to the Tourism Authority to fill the expiring term of Emma Godby. Term is four years, expiring on September first, twenty twenty-two, full board appointment, any recommendations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Ms. Emma Godby.
Is there a second? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, four one, it passes. Uh, that ends the appointments.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and count of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Harry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia, good evening, and continuing to talk about and discuss crime and criminal activity in Unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, as well as talking about crime and criminal activity all throughout the seven cities in Clayton County. For last year, two thousand seventeen, compared to the year before, two thousand sixteen, as well as two thousand and fifteen, and given the full and complete crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers, I will now start with the third major crime category, which is motor vehicle thefts. Motor vehicle theft is defined as a theft or attempted theft of a motor vehicle, more specifically, a self-propelled vehicle that runs on land surfaces. This includes automobiles, trucks, buses, motorcycles, motor scooters, all-terrain vehicles, and snowmobiles. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in Unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, there were one thousand four hundred and twenty-three reported cases of motor vehicle thefts, compared to one thousand two hundred and seven reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in all of Clayton County, including Unincorporated Clayton County, there were a grand total of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-six reported cases of motor vehicle thefts, compared to one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. The final analysis, last year, the number of reported cases of motor vehicle thefts in Unincorporated Clayton County continued to increase with an increase of one hundred and sixty-six from two thousand and sixteen, and a significant, massive, huge increase and jump of two hundred and seventy when compared to two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, the number of reported cases of motor vehicle thefts in all of Clayton County, including Unincorporated Clayton County, continued to increase with an increase of two hundred and fifteen from two thousand and sixteen, and a massive, huge, and substantial increase of five hundred and eighteen when compared to two thousand and fifteen. The commentary, all of Clayton County throughout the unincorporated areas, its seven cities just continues and continues to remain a crime-comitting, lawlessness, dangerous, reckless, and unsafe, high-crime county in this crime category, where there is an extremely high crime rate of motor vehicle thefts that is pervasive, prevalent, and widespread all throughout Clayton County, and continues to increase exponentially, just like the aggravated assault and the larceny of stealing crime rate, with seemingly no abatement, lessening, or reduction in sight by all of the police, sheriffs, and other law enforcement agencies in Clayton County, who have not been able to get the motor vehicle theft, as well as the aggravated assault and the larceny of stealing crime rate in Clayton County under control at this present time. I will continue to give the crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for Unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting. Good day.
Let me say this, Mr. Dr. Anderson, you know, sometimes those numbers can be misleading when it comes to, now, make no mistake about it, I'm not burying my head in the, in the sand, because we got crime just like any other metro Atlanta county, nor our city. But the way you make it sound when you're up here is that our police and sheriffs are not doing their job, and they're doing a tremendous job out there on those streets. So, I just wanted to make sure that I say that, because I know the men and women that's out there, and they have a true heart and spirit of protecting this county and its citizens. So I just don't want you to get up here and make it sound like our law enforcement community is falling apart, because that is not it, and our citizens are safe. There's crime everywhere in the metro Atlanta area. Thank you.
Jerry Beddingfield. There you just blew one out, just gonna say right out of the water. Jerry Beddingfield from Rex, Georgia, historical Rex Village, one of a kind in Clayton County, and I've been told that I praise you too much. I don't praise you, I praise God Almighty through Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
But you're the only one that has opened up his ears and hearts when I have a problem, I don't have a representative to go to to get anything done. That's wrong. Since nineteen seventy, I've been coming up here trying to save the old Rex Mill Bridge, and to make sure that y'all understand that you don't make the same problem you done in Jonesburg by tearing up stuff, losing stuff, it's our history. Do you understand you have one of a kind? And ever since before you bought the new bridge and everything, we were promised and sold a bill of goods that our historical bridge would be kept up, fixed up, and kept in the, uh, the side rails and everything for the charm of the village. We have had all kinds of movies, they're shooting them all over Henry County. We don't have them. I represent it in our area. I went to eat at, uh, Stockbridge tonight, because this is it. And we don't have anything in our area, and people are wanting to come in there, and there's nobody. And, uh, as far as Tamara Patrick, she's the only one that's done anything in that area of her produce of movies and tourism and stuff. Y'all will be looking at some of these women, promoting these women, 'cause they got a lot more sense than us men here, ladies. And if you watch tonight and listen, if you want to take care of a health cancer and children and everything, but you want us to build a multi-million dollar thing, a senior citizen thing over in Ellenwood, everything goes to Ellenwood now, we're not getting anything wrecked in the heart of pulling things out of Clayton, Henry County into Clayton County. Somebody's asleep, somebody's doing nothing, there was just a big change. After the first of the year, I will be back asking for things, but I do give you respect that you listen and you've helped, that I do, but I don't praise you and glorify you, 'cause when y'all come down off of them steps, we're all on the same level. We're all in the same mind and the same heart. We want a better Clayton County. I have tried to be the best citizen I could be and, uh, bring tourism and everything to Rex, Georgia. I've got no help. It's time for y'all to step up and help and do what's right. And if I've got more minutes, I will say this. When you come off of this board and go somewhere else or do whatever you're doing, stop and think about not just your own direction, your purpose, but the people of Clayton County, and farther than just your agenda. Each one of y'all have an agenda. I don't have anybody representing me, I don't mean any disrespect going around y'all to come to the chairman, but I have to.
Excuse me, the time is up, and it's not disrespectful going around to come to the chairman, 'cause I represent them.
You represent the whole district.
That's right.
And that's what I was told back when Bell and, and Bray and Charlie Griswold and everybody else, you got a problem, just call me, boy, here my number.
I said, and I mean it.
We need to have the public outcry back on this, you're taking away our freedom of speech and representation, and I don't care what you do, you got to put it back in, 'cause you look like a bunch of cowards and criminals.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mickey Garber.
That's it, son.
Mr. Beddingfield. Mr. Beddingfield. Linda Ingram.
I'm Linda Ingram, I'm from the city of Riverdale. As you all know, I'm here about animal control. I'm very unhappy the way that things are going down there, so let me start off with this. Adoption Day, it was like a parking mar- uh, parking, go take your dogs and puppies out to parking, uh, Walmart parking lot, and put free signs. Puppies were going out at four mo- at four weeks old, saying that, uh, without being, uh, vetted or anything, so it was a disaster. I mean, I don't have time to say it off here, but I'll be glad to tell y'all later if you're interested. Uh, second, uh, video just came out over this weekend, and I have seen it, and I know what's going on. And are y'all gonna cover it up and take up for everybody, or are you gonna let the public know what went on? And give these people a little slap on the finger and say, "Well, let's don't do it again." No, they need to be represented or whatever, and that's the truth. Second, people, y'all are not interested in Clayton County. On grand openings, everybody comes down there, and they're so-so, they're getting all the publicity, but their, your hands are, you don't go down there, and you don't get down, and you don't find out what's going on. I don't ask you to get down there and scrub and, and all of that, but it won't hurt you to go back in the back, smell the dogs, and get, and, and see what really goes on down there. Second, and the next thing is, take some of that money that you want to give to the vet and train the policemen that are going down there. There's, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the policemen that have just come down there. They're not trying, they're trying to, trying to do people's work up here on the hill. They need training, they do not know. You have to be around animals, and I was brought up in the country, I know. So they're, they're doing the best they can, but they need training. They're not doing, they're not doing what they need to do for the dogs. The dogs need spayed and neutered and all of that. And let me just say this, I, um, I have been in Riverdale for forty years, and I have used the same vet in Riverdale, and I did not know there was another vet in Riverdale. And I'm, that's all I gotta say about that. So, uh, y'all, please go to animal control, what's going on, I know. Please don't let this video get, because there were comments, and I think I emailed every one of y'all, and asked y'all to read the comments. What people are saying about Clayton, Clayton County, oh, it's Clayton County, it's a joke. They're making fun of Clayton County, and say, "Well, they're not from Clayton County." We're little people, we're, we're moving here, you want it to be better. But if y'all, and Clayton County is low on the list, and there's good workers down there. And I'm afraid to go in there now that I've known people since two thousand and twelve. I'm afraid to go in there and say, "How y'all, how y'all doing?" I'm afraid somebody's gonna say, "What are you doing here?" Get out. I mean, it's been done before, don't do me that way. I'm a citizen, I pay taxes, and I don't like the way that things are going somewhere down there. No, no reflection on the chief over here. I met him, I liked him, I like him, we've talked. And I say, if you look somebody in the eye, you'll know whether they're telling the truth or not, and it's true. And I have seen people, and I've looked them in the eye, and they're liars. So, you know, bye.
Thank you.
That's all I gotta say.
Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, and I'm your weak link. Is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventy-six still on the agenda for a vote? Stop the clock.
No stopping the clock, sir.
It is.
It is.
Yes, sir, it is, well, I want to speak to that subject. A resolution orderizing the release of net proceeds from the sale of the Rainwood Apartments to the Development Authority. I want that denied. It should go, as you say, sir, to pull down debt from Clayton County, or at least put a new roof on a damn health department.
Swatch your mouth, sir.
Excuse me, I get a little excited. That's what I want to speak to, to all of you on this board about. The people of Clayton County deserve that money. We gave our good name and our good bond rating for them to get, to float the bonds. Everybody got a little piece of the action who were involved in that buying and selling. Except the people of Clayton County, of which we gave our good name for it. It should, uh, it should come back to Clayton County. Ms. Singleton, as my district commissioner, I want you personally to vote against giving the authority, the, the Development Authority that money, and I strongly suggest, Ms. Hambrick, you do the same. I got forty seconds left. Do you have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, I tell you. I have a group of investors that's watching this video in T-Nec, New Jersey, and I'm kind of embarrassed. Since July the twenty-fourth, my phone has been ringing off the hook. We have been vetting investors. The only thing we turning down is apartment complexes. And it's quite disturbing to me when people who haven't built a doghouse or a house, supposed to be experts in economic development. When, I sincerely, I've been in meetings quite for the last two weeks, trying to persuade. People are coming back, trying to persuade them to wait and be patient. And we are not branding ourselves properly. We have a director of communications that needs to give the board TV training and presentation, because people are watching. They are watching because MARTA is bringing rail here. So, we're gonna talk about the Belt Line, and properties, and laws, and development. We have to be conscious and proactive on what we do, how we do it, and how we say it. I'm looking at, in meeting with the state, phone ringing off the hook. Currently, the governor got two point five billion dollars surplus money. And we are concerned about the suspended jet fuel taxes, but we have not put in a plan together. We got lobbyists that we are paying to go after that money for economic development. We are not taking advantage of our tier-one status. Nobody's taking advantage of it. That means we're deprived, that means we have federal dollars, we have state dollars, but yet we have an economic development department, we have a development authority, and nobody has built this team or plan to go after this money, because we qualify for it. So these are all the things that are in my ear. What is wrong with the system? And I'm fighting hard, because I have passion for the county. I've been here sixteen years, I have the skill set to get it done. And at the end of the day, we just need some cooperation and listen to the private sector, who have the expertise on how to pull it together. Public-private partnership is the only way to come out of a recessed, depressed community. And we have got to take a look at partnering up, conducting ourselves in a professional manner, as we move this county forward in the spirit of excellence, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to prolong it, but I'm gonna say this. Uh, Mr. Von Dell Jefferson, please don't, please don't address as nobody, because I will say this, as an elected official, first of all, we are all here to serve, and you have to make sure you pay attention to the votes. Second of all, I'm gonna say this as a people, we're ninety percent minority in Clayton County. And it always gets me when people come up to us and tell us people are watching. Let me tell you something, city of Atlanta ain't missed a beat.
That's correct.
And we are just little peons when it comes to the stuff going on in the city of Atlanta.
That's correct.
So I will say this, we have to all stand up for what we believe in at the end of the day.
Yes.
That's all I gotta say to you, so please don't use nobody, because we are doing our best that we can. Pay attention to the votes, sir.
I'm paying attention to the votes, and I know exactly what the weak points are. However, we have got to put the citizens, the two hundred eighty-three thousand citizens first, and be the public servant that you all were elected to be, thank you.
Jeffrey Benoit.
Good evening, Jeffrey Benoit, five seven eight three Rex Mill Drive. It's been said that if you repeat things enough, eventually somebody will hear it. And if you speak loud enough, maybe you can get some change. What has been said tonight, our citizens who can't come here, should have been able to view this, as so with all that has been going on up to this very point. But we took it upon ourselves, this board of commissioners, in a four-one vote, and eventually to some change, to take away public comment. I ask the question, you don't have to answer it. Is the board paying for that, or taxpayers? Because when you take away what the taxpayers are paying for, you simply say, "Your money is good, but you don't get the services that I promised." And I got a problem with that, because there's so many parents who can't be out here. And they need to know, they want to know, but guess what? They get an edited copy of the proclamations, they get an edited copy of whatever it is you want them to see, but not what has been said. I got a problem with that, and I'm quite sure everyone sitting behind me and in this room have a problem with that. So I would say to you, the board of commissioners, you've heard it time and time again, and you'll continue to hear it until we see a change. Why? Because it's taxpayer-funded programs, and they need to know who is voting for and against them, so that when they go out to a poll, they know who to vote for and against. I thank you, get back to business. The county and the taxpayers are paying for your salaries, and they're paying for their services. You do not have the right to alter them as if you run things, you don't.
Darlene Johnson. Ms. Darlene Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Turner, Commissioners. It's good to see you guys again, I'm actually glad to be back. I've been away for a while, but, uh, not uninformed. And what I'd like to just share with you tonight is that with our county, what I've seen since about two thousand and five, is that we've been bamboozled the whole time with the Spouse money. We're still spending Spouse money from two thousand and nine. Ridiculous. Um, on top of that, and more importantly, um, I'd like to make a couple of recommendations. It may some, it may be something that I shouldn't do, but I am gonna make a recommendation. And I'd like to request that you all, first business of order in January, when the new board is in place, is to replace this law firm that has been representing the county. The law firm that stood here without consent and participation of our chairman to implement that IAG agreement. You didn't include them in anything, we had the three-to-two block that we've had. You guys have held this county hostage for years. And it's a wrap right now. That is my first recommendation, that, that this law firm, that they got to back them and all their mess, be the first ones to go. And then we need to clean house and open Clayton County for business. Thank you.
Jean-Claude Bourget.
Good evening, my name is Jean-Claude Bourget. I live in, uh, Clayton County, Jonesville, Georgia. Well, I really didn't have much to say tonight, but I just signed my name. But however, I will say something. I want to agree with what was said earlier, as far as not allowing that four point four million dollars to go to the DACC, uh, Department Development Authority. I do not wish for that money to go there, for the simple reason, I think it's good, as good stewards, we should definitely pay down our debt first, before we just turn over the money to abort an IGA. Uh, the, we should simply not release that fund to the DACC, that's the first thing. Secondly, the thing that I want to point out is, as far as the public comment being televised, I was out of town when, last time you had the meeting with that, I wanted to see what happened, because Organized Clayton put together that little bit of demonstration, showing the folks that we do want to see public comment. I wasn't able to see that, I didn't know what happened, what transpired, okay? So I think it's all right as citizens, we are allowing our tax dollars to be used to do the things that we need to get done, okay? Thirdly, I want to talk to my commissioner. Okay, to go. That's fine. Uh, with the work that was done with the trail, that was perfect in my, in my neighborhood there, because I'm right there in the Lake Spivey, Whibley area there, very good. However, I feel that there was some work that was shadowly done. I need to know whom should I speak to, to find out, to make them accountable, to come back and get the work done properly. I've tried calling your office, but I did not get any type of response. So that's what I wanted to say, okay? So if we could meet afterwards, let me find out, because I really want to get that done. My entrances, I need for it to really look the way it ought to look. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Orithea Ensley.
Good evening, my name is Orithea Ensley. Unincorporated, unincorporated Clayton, Hampton. I, I don't have a lot to say, but I just wanted to note, because it is on the agenda to ask you to please vote the televised public comment back in its original state that it was in almost a year and a half ago. We would love to see that, and we deserve that. One other thing, I'm just gonna ask, I know I don't get an answer for these rhetorical questions, but I, months ago, I asked a question to the commissioners, "Why did you run for office?" I didn't ask, I didn't ask you to give them an answer, because I know three minutes go really fast, but I need you to really think about that again. And why do people vote you in? Because you need to make decisions that concerns and impact the entire county, not your own personal and private interest. So please think about that again, because there is voting coming up again, and we are gonna consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have time for one more speaker.
Deborah Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Deborah Scott, I am on one thirty-eight in Riverdale, and I'm also in Forest Park, um, with our Georgia Stand Up South office. So I came tonight to let you know we're back. Um, we worked with Friends of Clayton Transit, um, to get the buses here, but now we have to get the trains. So we do have a couple of questions. The first is, the seventy-three million dollars that is being, being held at MARTA, are you getting the interest for that to come back to the county? And if so, if, if not, you should put that in your next contract, okay? The second is, no Breeze cards are being sold in Clayton County. Not one. Not one Breeze card, you cannot buy a Breeze card in Clayton County, other than the airport. Not one Breeze card, you cannot buy a Breeze card in Clayton County, other than the airport.
But that is Clayton County.
Yeah, but, you know, yes, it is, it's considered Clayton County. Um, third, um, one thirty-eight, I understand that, um, that's a DOT issue, but we have people walking along the highway every single day, trying to get to the bus stops in between eighty-five and, um, Old National Highway. I saw a woman the other day on my way home, almost get hit, because she had a stroller in the middle of the street, because it was a, um, there was a puddle. So, if we can work with DOT to get that fixed, um, I think you would have, um, better connectivity, and I know that that's a jurisdictional issue, but if you can raise that, they said they need the request to come from this body. Um, also, I want to thank you, everyone who came out to Uncle Charles Chuck Ware's funeral, thank you for singing. Um, thank you for everyone who honored him, um, in life. I hope that you also will consider naming a senior building after him at some point, because he absolutely loved Clayton County and the seniors of Clayton County, and he worked for my organization for several years. Um, I just want to share with you, as we follow these issues in Atlanta, I hear some of the comments about Clayton County, and I think that we are the jewel of this area, and this is our time. Gwinnett is, is pulling on what you did and what we did collectively here in Clayton County. As the attention is in Gwinnett, don't let them forget about the things that were promised right here in Clayton County. They promised a lot, they promised those jobs, they promised community benefits, they promised that maintenance center, they promised the, um, the, the public safety building. And it's now four years later. This is the time, and you're in that sweet spot where they want you to sign that fifteen-year agreement, I'm sorry, that's a thirty-year agreement, and they have a defined date of when it needs to be signed. This is negotiation time. So, if you need to change your, um, attorney, this might be a good time to make sure that they represent the interests of the residents of the county. Thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Reconvene.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Suck it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Madam, it's Madam Clerk. I think we got anything.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Dietrich Stanford as the interim director of the Department of Economic Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Four-one it passes. Anything else for this board? Hearing those, uh, gotta hear myself. Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Good night.